All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? You know, and get caught up when they get here. If you're ready. True, all right. Call the meeting to order at seven thirty-three on September fifth, twenty twenty-three, the regular council meeting of the city council of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. And for a roll call here as we start, we have a council member Karen McFerrin, council member Josh Gilz, and council member Omar Martinez, we're expecting our other two council members to join us shortly. They also have with us tonight City Manager Lee Gertz, City Clerk Sherry Hopeford, and our Police Chief Eric Worley. Welcome, everyone. I will accept a, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moving in second to approve the agenda, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries three to zero. I'll ask for an approval of the consent agenda, including the city council meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moving in second to approve the consent agenda, if everybody got a chance to browse the minutes. Uh, any further discussion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries three to zero. We'll move on to item four, reports tonight, we have reports uh from streets, police, communication, safety, um and Father Guillermo, who's managing the facility assistance. And we'll come back to you after Paulie in a minute, and I see you're with us by Zoom. Oh, welcome. Councilmember Smith has joined us. The council have any questions for uh any of the department heads regarding the reports? Again, I'd like to say we don't often ask a lot of questions about the reports, but the the detail, don't let that be a reflection that the detail isn't appreciated. It's really great to see the these reports. Uh, any questions, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, just to add real quick, um due to some scheduling, I will have a written report for you at the next council meeting.
Excellent.
Update, and just a thank you from all of the supervisors with the utilities for your attendance and the tour and learning about our
Yes.
for utilities the other night, and um and then we did have a meeting with the uh I I W M C A about our safety, I know you had asked uh about following up with our safety folks to go over what we've done and where we're at with things, so sharing, I did meet with them. And um we did some, we had a meeting with the supervisors and we'll have another training meeting then tomorrow morning with them, so that's all I have to add for this.
Yes.
Who is playing the bad pipes in this picture?
Uh, I have to ask Don.
Is that in West Liberty?
No, so um not the last person on the photo, but the second to last is uh Oracle Down Strong, and he's actually an instructor for the honor guard.
Got it.
And when the honor guard gets asked to do colors, there's officers from all over the place, and I feel like that guy's from Cedar Rapids, but I'd have to ask him, and I can't remember which specific event that was.
Councilmember Smith, are you hoping to recruit him for band? I would go there for a very cool concert, actually, let's do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, any uh department heads or police chief, you want to share anything about your reports at all? Don't have to, but if you do have something you want to share.
I will note that mine, because of the July for holiday, my monthly report, it's always a month behind. That way I can give stats for the month, but since we skipped the meeting where I would have presented June, I'm now two months behind, so next time I have a report due, I will be submitting in July and August at that time. So we can get caught up.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, City Engineer Leo Foley, you have a few items here on this uh agenda coming up, do you want to share anything now?
I do, I want to, I do, I'd like to share one thing right now, and that has to do with the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and I think we had told the city earlier, we did a co-generation study um with eco engineers for West Liberty Foods. And the city was kind of involved with that because we were thinking potentially this might be located at the wastewater treatment plant. After we got done looking through it and going through the report, and the report's complete now, we pretty much decided that um this co-generation, the type of strength digester they need is a, what what's really called a high-strength digester, not for municipal sewage, it's for the things that they take to other locations because it can't come to the sewer. And we think it would be better on West Liberty Foods property wherever they decide they're going to relocate or close to here, it doesn't have to be right near it, doesn't have to be right on it, but you're going to be trucking to it, so close is important. And the wastewater that's coming off the wastewater treatment plant is very low in nutrients. Or I shouldn't say nutrients, on feedstock for this bio generator, which looks like it could very well be a very good um savings of money for them, but it will not impact the wastewater treatment plant the way it's set up right now. They're working hard to see if there's ways they could reduce the amount of pretreatment they do with this digester, but even that is difficult. But the amount of flow, the and the strength that will come to the city at this point won't change. So we had a chance to brief the president and the chief finance, uh the chief environmental officer um of the plant, and we told them that the baseline improvements to the wastewater treatment plant need to be done almost no matter what happens here with that. And they seem to be all in, I talked to the city administrator, so we'll kind of rework a contract for doing the, doing the plans and specifications for that project for the next meeting. We're not, um, we don't have to do a facility plan because we've already done that, but we have to kind of rework how we'll do the um the contract so we can part of that contract will become up with an agreement, a formal signed agreement with West Liberty Foods. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, that's some of the stuff that's gone on the last month.
Okay. Excellent, yes, please.
Uh, so you're talking about this digester, I'm assuming like turkey guts is what we're talking about going in there. Is it going to smell, like, is it going to stink?
No, this is, um, we're, we're building one in Clinton right now, these kind of digesters are um they have tops on them, and the, so, so the, the, the top makes it so that, that they contain the odors. And so the odor doesn't come out, and and the intent of the reason they want that top is they want all the gas, that and that gas is what smells. They want to capture all that gas and treat it so it becomes clean gas, and they can sell it to the um, to the gas pipeline.
That's pretty cool, thank you.
It's really cool, it's really a great, great idea of a project, and like I said, Muscatine now has one. We're building one for Clinton right now as we speak, so I, I think it's a, it's a really good idea, and because they want to be self-sufficient, it's probably a, a good thought for them.
Any other questions for City Engineer? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foley, we'll uh have more questions for you here soon.
You bet.
Four C is committee meetings, I do know that we will want to talk about the fire task force, although uh it's important that the chair of that committee, which is Dana Dominguez, is here, uh remind me of the protocol, can we come back to this item? How do I do that in the meeting?
I would, I'm going to refer to the secret.
Yes.
If you want to come back to it.
Can I do that?
Before we close the meeting out, you, you could come back to it, best practice would be to complete it as it is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Do we, do we, can we motion amend the agenda to like reorder it?
It's already been, the agenda's already been approved.
Okay, got it, yeah, that makes sense.
Um. I'd rather, I mean.
I don't think anyone's going to care.
Hey, I'd rather not discuss it without her being here, it's important that she's here, so let's uh, let's go on for now. Uh, any other committee meetings, I don't think we have other committees to report. Maybe, we'll move on to item five, it's public hearing on naughty circle and division street plans and specifications. I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open, public hearing, second.
It's moved in second to open the public hearing, any discussion? This is a roll call vote, councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero, and the public hearing is open, are there public comments or correspondence about this project? Anybody here, anybody contacted City Hall at all about this?
Yes, sir.
This is, of course, the uh resurfacing and repair of ninety circle drive and division street. If there are no public comments or correspondence, I will put motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Move in second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Again, a roll call vote, councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The public carries closed, motion carries four to zero. We have then a resolution to approve the final plans and specifications for the naughty circle and division street roadway improvements, and setting the date for the receipt of the bids, you've seen that document, if you saw in your email of lo- large document, um, you reviewed it. And I will accept a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion, second.
Movement second to approve this resolution, any discussion? Uh, Mr. Foley, I don't know if you need to add anything, but feel free if you'd like to.
Yes, I would, I would like to add something on this one, so the last time we talked about this, we had a problem on the sidewalk on the northeast corner of Division in Gibson, where we, we said the property, the where the trees are, we were taking out four trees. And they almost were, they almost split the property line, so your current property line goes almost through the middle of these trees, so we um, we went, met with the uh the landowner, and I'm sorry, Diane, I'm sorry, I'm missing the last name here, um.
Brooks.
Brooks, thank you. Diane Brooks and, and her son, Mr. Brooks, and, and came up with a um thought of, if you take those trees out, a couple of them were in bad shape, a couple of them weren't. What do you want to do in that area on her property, because we're going to be way up into her property in order to do that? She more or less said, just grade it so it's able to be cut, and we'll reseed it, get the seed to grow back in. And then as we turned the corner, there were two other trees, one was very close to where the ADA access would be. Our engineer tried to miss it, you could tell, we'd like to take it down. She was all in favor of that, and then asked for one other to be taken down as kind of compensation for us being all over her property. It seemed like a reasonable thing for me to do is to add one more tree to our list. So we will be going out for an addendum, and that addendum will go out probably tomorrow that says add these two trees to the, one tree we would like to take down, the other we wouldn't have to take down, but we think it's a probably a good deal to to make, to get her to approve in it, and then we will also have a temporary easement with her that says, once we're done, there's no more easement, and that property goes back to her, so she was very nice to deal with, and we'll get all this in writing in the next week. That's all I have.
Excellent, thanks for those details.
Right.
Uh, any other questions about this one? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Uh, again, a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Uh, Councilmember Dominguez, I see you joining us by Zoom, do you want to participate in the meeting uh via Zoom or just want to listen in tonight? I know we typically don't do hybrid meetings, but.
Um, I'm, I'd be there in person, I had something come up at the last minute, and um, but I could, I'll, I'll just listen in, and if you need me to chime in, just ask.
Okay, will do. Glad you can be here to listen in, and we'll just, uh, we'll just proceed. Um, I, I've said this, I think, before, but to councilmembers, but if you, if you're great that you can listen in, um, it's okay if you have to miss, you know, just let, let, let me know or let somebody know so we can uh uh, we can plan for it, but it's, it's certainly okay if you do have to miss, it's important that we're here most of the time.
Yeah, I've manager a, a text, but I know that she was probably very busy, and it was last minute, I apologize.
Sure, sorry, and I didn't in any way mean to be, I'm not trying to call you up.
Sure, sure.
When I say, I, I just mean, we're glad.
It's okay, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of listening in and, and staying quiet unless you, you call upon me, so.
Sure, I was actually trying to say the opposite, which is to say, don't feel any obligation to participate when you're on Zoom, because it's kind of hard.
Yeah, yeah, just got it now, I got it now, so.
We'll move on to item six A, it's a liquor license for uh Geary LLC, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Move this second to approve this liquor license for Geary LLC, any discussion?
What is the pending grant?
That's for the next one for Quebla. Uh, what does that mean?
It means that they have submitted their DRAM insurance, but it has not come back to be approved yet, so once it comes through, then it gets submitted to local, but the actual expiration date for this specific one will be tonight. Insurance has come through after the agenda was up, so once it's been submitted to local and you approve it, then we can go ahead and adjust it on the website. It has nothing to do with the ability of them to have an alcohol license unless the DRAM shop was not approved, and so when you're approving it, what you're approving it for is saying, yes, we approve it based on you having the DRAM insurance put in place.
Okay. Um, Chief Worley, anything to mention about Geary LLC?
So, as a whole, for all three, um, I've been working with the county who typically does the compliance checks, there has been a change in how they're going to be doing compliance checks. That is now going to involve uh us taking a major role in that. Um, that being said, we've never done that before, so we need to come up with a policy, figure out best practices, and come up with a procedure for it. Um, so that's in the works, I'm already requesting information from the county, from other departments that are already due this. So that's part of it as a whole. As it pertains to Geary, um, we don't have any issues that I found that pertain to alcohol purchases or anything like that. I will say that I did get one anonymous complaint from the state that called and said that they received an anonymous complaint. But um, due to the change in the compliance checks, we weren't able to double check that.
When you say compliance checks, is that like selling to underage people?
That's setting up a procedure for having somebody who's under.
Speaking of.
Yes.
Yeah.
So having a procedure for what they're asking for, what ID they have, um whether they give their ID or not, paying for it, all that stuff, so it's, yeah, there's a, there's a, a bunch to it.
So you're going to be doing those now? Cool, good for you.
I'm trying to request inspiration on how to do that.
Yeah.
And my goal is to not use um people from our community.
You know, it's like, do you use?
Well, we'd have to use somebody under twenty-one.
Okay.
But um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get information about, uh, because I use some near them. So if we have people that are interested, then great, but I'd rather use if we have people that are, I would offer them to county to go do other communities.
Yeah.
So we don't have our community kids.
Because everybody knows everybody.
Yeah, and I don't want somebody from our community, yeah, if somebody does accidentally sell to an underage children, and then they think you're the kid that did it, I don't want that.
Yeah, Jackie, okay, cool, good ideas.
So that's coming, but like I said, we in our system didn't have anything, but I did receive that one report from the state that they received an anonymous report about Geary, that's all I have. Okay. Excellent, any further discussions or comments about this?
Uh, I believe these are consent votes, is that correct? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve liquor license for Geary LLC. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero. Uh, following that is a liquor license for Quebla Mexican restaurant, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
I'm going with my.
Take your pick.
Moving in second to approve uh this liquor license, any discussion, chief, anything to add there?
Uh, we have no issues with this.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero. Following that, we have a liquor license for single list bar, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Move this second to approve. Any discussion, chief, about this single list bar?
Same, no issues at the moment.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero, we'll move on to vendor voucher claims. List number one is one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Move in second to approve vendor voucher claims list number one, any questions? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero, vendor voucher claims list number two is in the amount of seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Move in second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, I understand.
Motion carries three to zero with councilmember McFerrin abstaining. Item A is public comments and correspondence, are there members of the public here tonight with uh public comments? At our last meeting, we had a, a visitor from the robot dog, very interesting, and you?
Actually, I, I've been harassing uh Josh Jeffs at United, United Five North Columbus. Uh, I've been harassing people with links to different three D models that I've made, and I would love to establish a work session with somebody from city uh or department heads to kind of demonstrate how this can be of value add to our community. Whenever, whenever is available.
Excellent, thanks for bringing that to the community, and seems like uh, the challenge is to figure out how exactly to use it in a practical way, right, it's really neat.
Yeah, I, I've, I've taken probably twelve thousand pictures of the community in the last few weeks.
Were you able to connect with uh, with Leo at all?
Uh, I, I don't really check my emails, so uh, I'm not sure if he's replied, but uh, I, I'll get you something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you would be interested in it.
Yeah.
You, you want to?
I am, I am interested, I just haven't applied, replied, it's, holiday weeks are tough, I, I will get, I'll get to it this week, I apologize.
Probably send him an email, because I think I had your old email on that, when I forwarded.
Probably just text each other.
Send the dog, send the dog, send the dog with us. Um, I would, uh, I guess leave that with, with you at City Hall, if you wanted to set up a meeting to, to coordinate that, and um, yeah, I think we need stuff there. Yeah, cool. Uh, any other public comments? City manage, oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I do have one that came through on Facebook. Um, she specifically requested it to be stated to the council, um, it is from Beverly Quiswell at eight oh five Windus Avenue. Um, she had concerns about the track lanes of dirt brought into the field on the corner of Eighth and Windus. Um, I believe it is one of Geary's development locations. Um, she had concerns regarding um how often it floods there, and if the development is taking that into her.
Okay. Uh.
Is there a current development in that location?
Do you know what's happening there?
Oh, I do not, this is the first I know of it, so I will, I will contact. I wonder if he's using that as overflow from his new structure.
That went up on short suing, on short street. When he had access on short street, he was bringing it over, uh, when Mr. Hovland was here, that was something that they had discussed, but I will have to take care and follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll look into that, then, if you think for a question. Anything else in the room?
Um, I have, well, is, did you, my God, I'm sorry, it's been such a long day.
You're totally, you're totally fine, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're hosting a comic classic again this year, which is an Archie Man uh home competition, and it was supposed to be at the new field, and it's on, so I need to request that we close the street, but I just didn't have time to do it yet, and so I think I have to do it at the next meeting. It's just the Elm Street, like in front of the Memorial Field, but I just, I, I feel like it's probably supposed to be done in a month in advance, and I'm not gonna, the next meeting is not going to be a month in advance, so can I still submit that paper, and I'm sorry, and I just, yeah.
Sure, the way that's.
Great, fantastic.
Did that paper um line, she could fill it out?
I know, I know, we did it last year, I just, I'm.
If not, you can replace that, and we can send that information, thank you ever so much, okay, that was it.
All right, excellent. Councilmember Martinez, public comments. Uh, councilmember McFerrin?
Well, I'm sure there is, but I can't think of anything right now.
A long week for all of councilmember Schultz.
Uh, I had somebody mention that, it was just like, the curb was kind of cracked, they were unsure how to go about that, like if it's something that the city fixes, something that they kind of take care of. I believe it was on the corner of like, Captain sixteen, is that sound right? Trying to think where that like meets there, but.
Um, I can connect with you after the meeting and see, and then, um, yeah, if it's a city street, and it's a curb with the city street, then, yep, we may look into it.
And they, they were just kind of letting, letting us know.
Yes, that's great, okay, we appreciate that, we'll say that.
Excellent. City manager Gertz, public comments?
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, City Clerk Hopeford?
I do not have any at this time.
Okay, excellent, we'll move on. We're into new business, item nine A, it's discussion and appropriate action by the city council on the sister city relationship with the city of Argentina. Uh, is there a, uh, I, I actually, I guess before we uh, before we add for the motion, I'll just invite council, since we're doing, changing our format here, discussion and action, so I'm going to invite Mr. Brooks to uh share briefly about this program and um this city that they chose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So after a little over a year of process, this little sister cities committee has settled on our recommendation to the council um for the global city that we think we would like to partner with. Uh, it's a community of RAC face, Argentina. RAC face is a city of about twenty-six thousand people in the Buenos Aires province of Argentina. Um, they're a relatively small community, that was one of the things we were looking for. Uh, it would be pretty difficult to match with another community of four or five thousand people. Uh, but we, we think twenty-five, twenty-six thousand is, is a good match, enough people, enough businesses to support uh the infrastructure of the sister cities program, um, while not being at the huge metropolitan city. Um, RAC face and, and that region of, of Argentina, uh, big in agriculture, so ash crops. Additionally, uh cattle is really big, and also in this area poultry. So a big time, and we got West Liberty Foods and local industry. Arts culture is really big. Uh, dance and music, as a matter of fact, they host a, a regional annual music festival in RAC face, and another tie-in to West Liberty, they are known as the motor racing capital of Argentina. So lots of, lots of tie-ins with arts and culture and industry and business. So we feel like we have a pretty good partner. When we had narrowed down, when the committee had narrowed down to a few different cities, uh, we had reached out to those communities asking for input, we didn't want to go down this long process, if they just flat out weren't interested in participating. Um, and their uh ministry of culture and tourism responded right back that they'd be excited in having the sister cities program with us, so we're still early, early days, um, we're asking for your general consensus so that the community can be born and take that with us. Uh, in our communications with that community there, from there, we will draft up a formal agreement establishing the sister cities relationship between West Liberty and RAC face, and we'll bring back that agreement through your approval when it's ready.
How many cities did you, were on the shortlist, so to speak, that you considered, just out of curiosity?
I think seven, ended up with about seven shortlists.
Yeah. It's really interesting. Well, it's a meat program, I, I uh I know it from Muscatine, there's a park in, in Muscatine that has a pole with all of their sister cities. Uh, signs pointing to the location of all the sister cities on it, which is a, which is neat to see, you know, it's kind of ties you in with the.
Depends on mileage, I think.
What's that, and mileage, probably, yeah. Uh, any questions for Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, so once, once the, what does that in place, um, I guess, what are the benefits between city to city? So the idea, there are five or six different um overarching themes that sister cities are having. It's right, um, arts and culture, education, economic development, there, um, health, a few others. So the idea is that it's a free exchange of ideas, kind of um championing the uh, the art of citizen diplomacy, right? Uh, everybody in Washington is really busy with the.
Uh, everybody in Washington is really busy with the official diplomacy. This kind of takes the government out of that and it's citizen, citizens that help each other. Uh, trading ideas and best practices. So part of the relationship is that we will constantly be uh trading delegations back and forth. Go visit for a week at a time. We'll have opportunities to do a study abroad programs for students and and teachers should we want to do that.
Motion to vote for it?
Excellent. Yeah, it sounds like we want to have do option number one.
Yeah.
Are you recruiting people to 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 move there for a year and set the program up? Is that the uh part of the wheelie budget?
Yeah. We're gonna need a further increase next year.
Okay, yeah, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to pursue establishing a formal sister city agreement with the city of RAC face, Argentina. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for your work on this. It's been awesome. Thanks, so. Item nine B is discussion and action uh in on the event assistance and street closure for Midwest One Bank and the West Liberty Community School District. You have this uh paperwork here in front of you and I would invite representatives with us tonight to talk about this event.
Um, so previously, Midwest One Bank has presented run for the schools um where it's a five K run or walk um to raise money for the West Liberty Community School District. And unfortunately, because of COVID and some other things that were going on, it's been on hiatus for the last five years. And so with everything kind of settling back down this year, we've decided to try to bring it back. So the race would be on October first um at three o'clock in the afternoon to avoid church time for families. Um, and we are just hoping to get some of the streets closed so that the runners and walkers can have a safe route along the way.
Good word. Any questions? Counselor?
So you will be crossing the highway? Is that?
Yes, unfortunately, in trying to measure out a five K, um it passes by all of the schools. It kind of requires uh going across the highway. So we tried to keep that just to one location, as you can see, and I believe it crosses right there in front of the middle school.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So um that way they would only be crossing at that location, going up, turning around and coming back across.
We, we did this in years past, then it, it worked rather well. So.
Probably a little bit lower traffic on that time of the weekend, that would get.
Yep.
Great. It's fun to see that coming back.
Yeah.
Uh, any further questions? I'll accept a motion to approve this uh street closure and event assistance motion.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Again, great statement back.
Kirk and I are so well lit. Traffic control.
Excellent.
We got this.
You're certain more than about the state for the rest of the meeting, but don't feel obligated to if you need to get home. Uh, it's too late here. We'll move to nine C, a resolution to approve pay estimate number six for for all American concrete. This is for the Rainbow Maxx Street project. Uh, looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Movement seconded to approve this resolution. Uh, Mr. Mr. Foley, would you like to comment on this one?
No, I think everything's going good out there and recommend approval.
I have a question for Mr. Foley very quick. Is this uh, is the, is the whole thing going to be done by October seventh? Do you know?
By October seventh?
Uh.
The road may be open by October seventh, but the whole thing will not be done. They've, they've gotten till December to finish the project. It'll probably take them till December.
Yeah, it it's like, I guess one of the van parents reached out to Parks and Rec and asked if we could use Dutton for a warm-up facility again. And I said, I, that's probably a no-go, but they insisted that. Oh, no, they said it was okay. They said it was okay. So like school buses going to Dutton, uh, yea or nay? I feel like nay.
But I think they could go on the road. It'll just be like the um, the path, the, the path may not be done. Some of the sidewalks may not be done, but the road, the road should be done.
Should be.
Should be. I, I, it's hard to say with contrary, hard to say a hundred percent, but it it it's on their schedule to have it done. It they've told me it will be done, but you know, and that means the road open to traffic. And I, and I you know, you're talking a month away, right? And they, they, they say it will.
Hey, thanks.
Even if it wasn't completely done, it should be open, correct?
That'll be open. Traffic will be able to move on the road, yes.
That'd be totally, but you can get into that.
That was part of our purpose for closing the entire to get it moving. Yeah, yeah. So as we get closer to that, we can just stay in contact and coordinate.
Yeah.
Engineer, engineers don't like to be pinned down by contractor schedules, but in this one and and this one, I, I, I feel pretty good that they'll be able to get buses in and out of there without any problem.
Okay.
Two weeks, isn't that the standard? Two weeks, two weeks.
There you go.
Um. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further questions or discussions? This is a roll call vote. Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. We have next a resolution to approve pass number number two from SG Construction. This is for well number two. Phase two, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Movement seconded to approve this resolution, and I'll turn back to you, Mr. Foley, if you, if you do have anything to add.
A-again, SG Construction's doing very well over there. Um, we have a little hiccup with the um phase one contractor. I thought they were going to get started on electrical last week. We have approved now their shop drawings, so I'm thinking that there's just some delay and they should be there next week. So I would recommend approval of passment number two to SG.
Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. We have a resolution to enter into an agreement with Callahan Municipal Consultants for the City of West Liberty's strategic planning. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Um, city manager Gertz, briefly, could you just give us a couple sentences about what this this has been done in the past, but what uh, what we're looking at?
Yep, we stay on schedule. Um, every couple of years we update on our previous planning and we headed to um, so we're past that two-year mark and it's time to update and um and put together some other future plans. This helps us with our budget and um, bringing our staff and council together for that process and prioritizing um the focus and on those purchases or projects as we move forward.
It doesn't look like there's a specific date in here for this to take place. Am I just missing it, or is this just like a general contract and we decide a date later?
It's a general contract. We have a date out there.
Okay.
Um, it was, let me go back. We had looked at, um, I think he was gonna follow back up with me. Um, it'll either be the very last week of November or the first week in December. Uh, because we wanted to give it enough time for um, once we got through elections. If anybody newly was elected to um serve, then they would have the opportunity to be you know, have some time to come on and then be a part of that strategic planning.
Okay.
So it was, and then we'll approve the date once we get that finalized.
Okay. So like when we do elections, I, this is kind of a general question, and then they do elections on November, whatever, is like the very next day of the new people, the new council. It's like also January, right?
Yes, so you're, yeah, like you serve until, yeah, December thirty-first and then January, then you're newly elected, so they office. So would it, would it be smart to say this until January or no? Okay. No, we've had it in the past where we've done it in end of November, December, and then the newly elected came. Yes, it's a good transition. Yep, it's a good transition between existing and then um those that are coming on board. Cool, because there's a lot of history that those that are leaving can kind of add to that. Um, it's a great way to explain
Yeah.
the past, the present, and then uh we should gear up for the future. That'll be everybody's in one room.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or discussion?
And then we'll have the date for you know later than the next meeting, so we have that in our calendars.
The last time we did this, Omar picked the pizza and it was really good. Can you pick it again? Not like lots of nothing, but I mean.
Can you have Mr. Callahan write that into his contract?
Okay. Anyway, good to vote.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, this again is a roll call vote. Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero. We have a resolution to purchase a Chevy Traverse from Wheelie Chevrolet for the city. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moving and seconded to approve this resolution, I will ask uh city manager Gertz if you can walk us through your thoughts on this.
Yeah, um, so at this time, we currently have um in two thousand and thirteen Chevy um Captiva, which they no longer make the vehicle. Um, seven years is your, your timeframe of before the for the vehicles um basically lose their value. They're no longer, they're depreciated out. Yeah. Um. And at the same time, it, it's a, it's a smaller vehicle that um does not afford us. So when we have more than three or four people traveling, it's, it's a smaller vehicle. Um, it does not handle well to the road as a heavier vehicle, so a lot of our staff members um are not comfortable driving the vehicle when you're leaving town. Um, so they were more concerned about having a little heavier duty or vehicle for long distance traveling. Um, we've also aged out towards starting to have to have maintenance done. Um, we just recently had to have I mean, it's not uncommon that you have to have brakes, but we're also looking at new tires and you know, and there's some other things um that'll be coming up as far as maintenance goes. Um. The other part of that is um when we're having staff is not utilizing the vehicle, or if we have to take multiple vehicles, then we're having to use our own personal vehicles. So we have a reimbursement of mileage. Which reimbursing mileage is, it, it can become costly if you have a lot of folks traveling. Um, this does allow us to, like I said, it has a little more capacity to fit more people into one vehicle versus what the Captiva has.
Um, I did ask uh city clerk Hobart about the reimbursement because I was curious how much the city was spending on that. So the, the last twelve months, it's just shy of five thousand dollars has been reimbursed for four thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
What's that per mile? Is it the federal rate?
Questions?
Yeah, and then just that quickly, and the bigger part of the thing is, is that, I mean, we did, I did try to find um a, not a brand new vehicle, but given the used car market right now, it's extremely small because there's not a lot of inventory. But then what's there is because of that used market, um, the price for a used vehicle we looked at was um thirty-six thousand dollars. So then when you take into account um what the new car rate is and then we were also able to, the Wheelies was also able to meet the state bid. Um, so we were able to get the discount of forty-eight hundred dollars from the, what we would get if we bought state bid. So they were able to come under that a little bit. And then um the trade-in value of the Captiva for a thousand, which is a very fair trade-in value uh given the age of the car. Granted, it has, so it just has eighty, a little over eighty-eight thousand miles on it. So again, there's no warranty on the car anymore. Um, and then the new one would come with a warranty and, you know, but again, whatever councils, um and just to clarify, the city car is not just the administrative offices car to use. That vehicle is utilized by um all of the employees, can even be utilized by council and the mayor. If you're traveling out, I mean, that's what it's there for.
For trainings.
For trainings, for attending meetings, yeah. So you're not having to take your personal vehicles. Um, like today we had um our wastewater treatment plant, they, they had to go to training today. So they utilize the, the Captiva for that to, to go.
So how many people does the Traverse seat?
It has the ability to seat um three, so it has a third row.
Okay.
So I think it can seven, yeah.
I guess I wish I just had data on like how often we use the Captiva and how many people go in it. And I, I feel like having more information would allow us to make a better I, I don't know, I just feel like there's a lot of details that I don't know and I don't know how to make a good, like what's the miles per gallon on it and and how often do we take seven people and would it be cheaper if we, you know, took a car that had five people and reimbursed somebody for the other two people? Or I just, I feel like there's a lot of mathematics in here that we don't have information for.
You, you thought of more questions than I did. I thought of the mileage. You thought of more, more questions. Um, yeah, those are good.
Well, the only thing I would just add, I mean, I respect that, but so you're looking at twenty twenty-three and you look at the cost of what the car is. If the city holds out and doesn't purchase another vehicle for another five to ten years, then think of what the cost, so the cost isn't going to depreciate anytime when you're buying a newer vehicle. If we're able, the administration's able to get ten years, if not a little longer, out of a car, the value is what you have to look at as far as what we're going to purchase it for today and the longevity. We can't get that out of our you know, our utility vehicles and things of that and those we continually roll, we're in a process to roll them over in five years. So we have waited as long as we possibly can, but unfortunately, the market's not going to get we're not going to be in a better position. Um, also, this is not just bought with general fund dollars. This is, this is a, across our utility funds, some general fund, five percent of general fund. And the bigger percentage comes from the utility uh revenues to purchase the vehicle. So it's just.
Five percent from general fund and the rest spread across the utility funds?
Yeah. Yep, that's our, that's our standard split for that type of investment for that. And for those.
And I didn't, I didn't necessarily mean not buying a vehicle. I, I meant in comparison, like would it be better to get a smaller vehicle? Or you know, like the district has a Chevy Malibu and it's like a Ford Flex, like so what's, okay, so but like not knowing how often seven people go on a trip for the city, it's hard for me to say, well, is this smarter? No, it's not.
We just went on the tour and they make two vehicles.
Sure.
And granted, we don't, I mean, again, we don't travel. We haven't been traveling as often, um, but there's a lot of times when, and it's not just for us here. There are a lot of, you know, departments that will take, you know, more than just two people and again, whatever council, you know, we'll, we just, again, looking at the opportunity, looking at the cost, looking at the years that, that were at a depreciated value. I mean, this isn't uncommon, what cities would ask to do when you get to that point. Um, but whatever council decides to do, I mean.
Look, this authority within uh our budget.
No, what are you getting within our budget? We can afford to do it, but because we were starting to have problems with, with Captiva.
Okay.
That's the reason why. And then looking at the long, and looking at the costs as they continue to grow, it's a, it's a fiscal ask on my part to say we're not going to get a position where we're going to get something less. We can, we can hold out if we need to. But again, our, it's not going to cost us anything less. It's going to continue to go up.
It's gonna be a need here, so probably the council's choice is to do it now or to budget for it and do it next year would be the, the thought, I think. Um, I've never been one to drive uh new cars, so I, I'm always frugal on, on cars, so it's, I, I have questions too. Um, but I assume that if, would I be correct to say that if Um but I assume that if, would I be correct to say that if the. If this vehicle's purchased, then the reimbursement goes to zero, right? I mean, the city would basically say. You get to drive that or else.
Well, I can't.
Reimbursement your personal car.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, you still could have more than one person being gone at the same time.
In that situation, sure, but I assume that would be.
But it should go, it it should go down quite considerably, because you you're gonna have individuals that are gonna feel more comfortable driving.
I mean, this is, I I get, I think it's based on a lot of preference, correct? Like somebody isn't comfortable in that car and the weather or whatever, and so they drive their own vehicle is what I understand.
I've driven, I mean, I'm kind of really the only one that will take it simply because when others have taken it. It does not hold to the road, it's lightweight, you know.
You you you, you know, that concern. Sure, but that that would go away with the new one.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, if you drive that car, you would understand.
The the Captiva? Well, I rode in it a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I drove it in Des Moines.
You drove it in Des Moines?
Yeah, and you get a, you get a windy situation and you're.
Did you find your plane?
No.
You're lucky.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Comments? The motion is to approve the purchase of this vehicle.
Make a motion.
Uh the motion is already on the table. We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero. Uh we'll move on to a resolution to improve reimbursement to SGA Construction. The Wheelie Matching uh West Liberty Economic Development Matching Fund Grant in the City of West Liberty. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. This is one of these matching fund grants. We've done done a lot of these, but but specifically for drywall. Uh on this project, I think it's self-explanatory unless you want to add anything, Mr. Brooks. Part of it, I think, is about ninety-five percent done is the old tire shop building right across from jury D P. I think they're finishing a little bit up on some of the secondary apartments. And they're getting ready to build up the commercial space downstairs, but.
Okay, so how long time the coffee shop? What if the quality of their pumpkin spice latte?
We have a motion and a second to approve. This matching fund grants. Any further discussion?
Is it gonna be scooters? I'm sorry.
All those in, I'm sorry, the roll call vote, actually. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yeah.
The motion carries four to zero. We'll do a resolution accepting the twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal audit and allow Bowman and Miller, our firm, to file the audit. Is there a motion to approve? Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Um we reviewed the audit during the work session with our our auditors, uh good information, any any discussions or questions? It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dills.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero. We will set the date for a budget amendment hearing for September nineteenth, our next meeting at seven thirty P M. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this budget amendment hearing. Any discussion?
Just to add on that, so part of the car purchase will be on your budget on, for your budget.
Yep.
Along with that, there'll be a few other things that have come up as there's electric equipment. That'll be a part of that budget amendment as well, so.
Any questions? A roll call, what you do, a roll call, just consent, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I mean, all opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Um. Without all of us being present in the room, I'll wait on the. Uh prior task force discussion, just to, I I'm gonna ask that the task force committee meets again. And bring some recommendations back to council. So I'll uh, I'll I'll just say that and we'll, we'll go from there for now, for tonight. And we will, I'll entertain a motion to enter into a closed session. Uh pursuant to Iowa Code, chapter twenty-one, that five C.
Wait, I have a, sorry, I have a question about the, so the task force is gonna meet in between now and the next council meeting? And then at the next council meeting we'll have?
That's what I'm gonna ask for. I'm gonna ask for the committee, the council committee.
Yeah.
To meet. And. Bring back recommendations to you, council as a whole. If you'd like to participate in that committee meeting, you're welcome to as well.
Okay.
Make sure you're aware of it.
So that's, that's. Council committee is just the two people.
That would be, yes, Dana. And uh Karen.
Okay.
When was the last time that?
The task force as a whole hasn't met for a little while.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of discussion via email and really it's not, council needs to be careful about conducting business in email. That hasn't been going on, but we we don't wanna it to turn into that. So I'll ask for the task force to meet and then bring back recommendations to this, to you as a whole board. And again, if you want to join the committee meeting. Make sure you're aware of it. Yeah.
Okay. So many questions.
Yeah, it's a lot, a lot to discuss there, for sure.
Just a reminder, Mayor, if we do have other council members join the committee meeting, then we are gonna have to post it as a public meeting. Uh because we could, we would run into a quorum. We have to make it very clear that no action would be taken.
Yes, I guess meeting is gonna be.
It's giving the warning to challenges that if you have a, if if you're going to look to have.
My understanding with the committee meeting was posted already, as it is, right? But it would be a quorum then if there's more consequences, right?
So we would have to specify on the agenda that no action items would be taken. So if that is something that you guys want to do with this possibility, I will just need to know ahead of time so that I can get it posted correctly.
That's the way I would like to do it. I'd like the committee to meet and invite the other council members if they would like to participate in that meeting. So that means it'll be a public meeting, we'll post it. Um but that'll give it just a dedicated tonight for council. And council to talk about that, and then I think there's some homework that needs to be done and bring something back to the larger group. Figure out kind of what the next step, sorry, but that sounds good, everybody.
Yeah.
Um yeah, there's more we could say tonight, but like I said, I'd really like to wait just until we're all in the room, so I, I just wanna be. Um. Be respectful of that, so. Let's uh I will entertain again a motion to enter into closed session.
Motion.
Motion and second to enter into closed session. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Excuse me? Still voting? Just Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Okay, we'll enter into a closed session. Thank you, everybody.